I'll point out Bruce will not be here tonight. Excuse himself earlier. We have payroll in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty cents.
The commission approved payroll in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four cents.
And I'm saying that all papers out. Then we have to a tolerance receipt of the payroll.
No, wait a minute. We also have payroll for six thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, that's not on there either. Okay, let me find that here. That's all that you didn't want that was, I figured you'd let us know.
It's an additional that we had to do for employees.
Okay.
So we're one hundred and eighty-nine, thirty-one, forty-six, they're correct.
Ah, okay.
They're on two different sheets, so I don't know where to start.
Yeah, they were separate sheets, okay. So we can prove it. We can prove separately. Not many questions. We proved six thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-seven cents.
I'll second that.
All right, say aye. All right. They both improved separately.
Sixteen seventy, thirteen percent.
Thirteen, yes. John, my, well, he has nothing priced on the cameras, is it okay? We'll try, we'll try to act as part of it.
You had to buy a special filter, right?
You want to push out business there. All right, we have anti-checks. Want to, uh, Sanofi's passed here incorporated?
We've got, we've got the pay. Can we ever approve the payroll claims?
No, that's not on there either. So what we got, we have the, um...
The payroll claims was one hundred and twenty-five thousand. I got those things switched. I switched them different places.
I got that. I got that.
Glad you got the one from last time. That was approved. It was assigned.
Okay, and we signed that, yep. So we should reach the anti-check.
Correct.
Right, why is that?
The anti-check is from the health department for one thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
What is it for?
And it's for flu vaccines.
Okay, oh, okay. All right. All right, we have a celebrity in the group. No red and white man back there?
Could we approve the anti-check supplement?
I thought we did. I'll make a motion. I thought I did, but I'll make a motion to approve anti-check of fourteen, thirteen, sixty-seven, all fair and sound. Okay. Um, Mark Davis is head of the, is the Gateway Trails still using them?
Park Trail Alliance.
Park Trail Alliance, now, okay, they changed the name. And if you hadn't heard, or I imagine most of you have, they were awarded a next level trails, a, um, a five million dollar grant to work on the trails plan in, in Park County, connecting with those in Vigo County. And so come out and have a seat there and tell us what your, what's on your mind.
Okay, actually, I've got two items of business I wanted to cover. Uh, first thing is, uh, I've got a letter just want to sign. I brought a few copies as well. Recently, the Park County Redevelopment Commission, yeah, here's.
Written on the copies there.
Held a property sale. And there is a parcel that I understand did not go in that particular sale. It's located, um, adjacent to our property out here, just where Bridgeton Road takes off south of the depot.
Okay.
Um, I spoke also with Mark Vanderheiden, who owns a piece right there as well. And, um, asked him if he, you know, had any issues or was interested, and he expressed that he wasn't, and that he supports us potentially getting that. So we'd just like to make a request. Um, we did miss the sale due to some different reasons, but if it would be possible to consider transfer that piece of property to our group.
Okay, we'll ask attorney and make sure that's all the claim you did go.
Yeah, I'll just have to pull the statute for transfers to adjacent park property owners and then notice to Mark, which should be easy since you've already talked to him.
Mm-hmm.
Vanderheiden, and as long as there's only two adjacent properties, it shouldn't be very hard for us to go through that. But I can work with Mark on that.
I think the town is the other adjacent.
Right, and they're not interested in it because I already talked with them about it, so. So it should be a fairly quick turnaround, um, on that. Uh, I'll just pull that statute real quick and we'll be able to do that.
Okay, and it's indicated in the letter, any costs or anything associated with that we're going to...
I think I already have that information from when that came out, so it shouldn't be real hard to go through that.
Good. What else you got?
Well, um, you already stole my thunder.
See, nice go.
Right. No, actually, uh, we did, we were awarded a five million dollar next level trails grant, which was the maximum amount allowed under the regional trails division, that regional and local trails, local trails.
Keeping in mind, the first round, they were denied.
Yes.
I called, man, we're not getting anything out of this.
Right.
Pursued again.
Yep. There were some questions that they had, and actually, they held our application back from the selection committee on the first round because they had some questions. Uh, and so we worked through those, submitted it. We are the only group that got, that requested and got the entire five million, uh, out of the, out of both rounds so far, so no one's gotten the maximum amount. Obviously, we appreciate the commissioner's support in this. Uh, I was also asked, when I got the call, uh, the governor made the announcement on March fourth. But on March first, I got a call at nine o'clock in the morning, letting it snow, and was invited to participate at the press conference that the governor had, uh, on Thursday afternoon, so.
And he was sworn in secrecy because the first call I got was from a reporter in town. Oh, let's know what the deal is.
Which was probably about five minutes after the press conference.
Probably was.
Finished up because, uh, yeah, Mark Bennett.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, and, because he was on the press, uh, conference, press release conference call, and actually asked me a question on that as well. So, yeah, I got to participate in a couple, fielding a couple of questions too, which is, I'm not a public speaker, and I was hoping to just kind of be done with my little thing, and but the governor dragged me back in.
Okay.
But it's good, obviously, I think, for the county. I said before, when I came in originally, asking for, uh, support and, uh, a letter of support for our grant, that, you know, this is a generational opportunity, I think, to make this kind of investment. The project's will be about six point four million dollars total, uh, and we're going to keep as much of that local as we can.
How many miles of trails are there?
The, uh, we're looking at about ten miles right now. It's still a little, we haven't finalized any design.
Right.
It's all preliminary, but there will be about ten miles of trail, uh, connecting the depot to the Vigo County line. And, uh, most of it's on the road right away, not all of it. Uh, we will be using county road, uh, the actual roadways. Uh, we have some gaps along the way. But, uh, it, uh, I think it's going to be pretty good. We've got pretty good support. We have several, uh, property owners along the way that agreed to, uh, work with us in purchasing their property. Uh, some right-of-way sections that we don't have, or pieces of property to get around, uh, for those where we can't get it.
Good.
And we'll continue that work. Actually, we're going to start on the work with talking with property owners soon, uh, to try to acquire those. Our funds won't be available till probably around August, uh, but we'll hopefully start doing some, uh, maybe surveying and, and preliminary design work by then. And what I have is, uh, obviously, there's been some, um, offers and help on some different pieces of the project. And so, uh, it'd be a few months, but I'll need some direction along the way on to, uh, one in particular, the bridge on the North Main Street in Rosedale. Uh, we talked about possibly sharing that. I'm sure we have to get that into budget somehow. Uh, and, uh, I think we're going to cover the design and, and a portion of that work going in there.
Right.
So I was talking with Randy, or we get something to present to you on the...
Well, we ran his proposal on the bridge, but if you've got that addition, change in design, um, are we part of these on that, or who that is?
What's? BS, yeah, we'll be working with BS, uh, on all the bridge work.
Not to interrupt you, but while it's on my mind, I won't be there very long. A guy named Kevin Ettrick, and you might make a note, he's going to be contacting you. He's from Parteese.
Okay.
And he, his company's interested in helping with whatever design needs you. Doesn't mean you got to use him, it's just somebody, he's here in Park County. He helped us when we did the, the bridge, had Monizum across the wall, back at Monizum.
Oh, okay.
Parteese did the design on that. And, um, of course, the engineering goes getting crazy. We got up to twenty thousand on the engineering, which is about what we expected to be. And, um, he stepped in and stopped it, says, no more, whatever else the cost is, we'll just do, that's enough money coming out of that grant to do that. But all of it was volunteer labor, so all of this laboring.
Right.
To give it to the engineering company was not a good idea, so he took care of that. So I think he'd be good to work with, but I'm not recommending him, or, or not recommending him. I'm going to tell you, he's going to be giving you a call. But that's who that is. He's a, he's a friend of Park County. He's part of the engineering company.
Okay, all right, very good. Now, that'd be good. And any resources we have, especially local or familiar, local people have some kind of contact we want to probably utilize that here. That, actually, I'm, I'm going to cover the majority of the construction engineering portion of it, so. And the engineering firm that I'm looking, did some preliminary work with, uh, they're allowing that basically, so that, that's going to be, uh, a good part of our maps as well. Because we, our maps, we had to come up with, uh, one point four million, you know, anything over five.
Yeah.
And it, the cost could go up beyond that, because if, we haven't really done any, a whole lot of fundraising, so we hope to do some more fundraising. And, uh, maybe get some nicer trailheads with restroom facilities and water at the trailheads, uh, at each of the trailheads, so.
Well, it's not a good plan. I mean, this issue has been around, before I was commissioner, I'm there eighteen years, so it's been around better than twenty years. So we've been in contention, this issue, because we were concerned about strangers coming on their property, which, of course, is not really their property, but it's, they've become part of the property. Because it's been sitting there making it for all these years since they've had the railroads. I understand all that contention, that concern, and I know you're going to work with them. It's going to be as, as ignable as possible as you work through the process to get this done. So I'm glad other landlords that know gaps have stepped up and said, we use ours, we can make our own beach, or whatever we have to do, so. I'm, my best hope of all this is that everybody comes away happy with what we've done. And I can tell you stories some other time about, um, my experience with the, um, trails of areas going all across the state, talking to, talk towns and bad trails. And many started off, but in here, not knowing, concerned about what kind of activities, going along with the trails and stuff, and that. But all of them, to all of them, believes it was a good thing. It's been a good thing, so it takes a while to get there. You know, people have something new, you're encroaching on people's privacy, and it's just tough also.
Yeah, I spoke to probably twenty-six landowners looking to acquire or working around them or whatever, uh, going through the application process. And, uh, it is an education thing, and, and it's just, it's conversations, you know, and as I tell all of them, we want to be good neighbors, you know, we, so we're going to work with you however. If we can't get it, we'll figure out a way around or, or whatever, so. And it's, it's been pretty good. The first couple of conversations are a little tense sometimes, but, uh, you know, I've had some good conversations with people. So we'll continue to do that.
Good. Well, if you need any help from us or any concerns, and likewise, if we get concerns from someone, we'll always bring them to you as well.
That's quite, yes, please do.
That transparency, that open conversation is the only way to go, so that's what we need to do.
Exactly.
Anybody have any comments from Mark, like certain of the trails' concerns? Would you love, I'll stand your word, I, I just, I have the whole group's perseverance, like I said, for around a long time.
Yeah.
This nice day is coming. Now it boils on our part now, so now it's all...
Exactly, yeah, now the work really begins.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I, I'm not speaking for Nick, but I suspect we'll be able to make that, your signal to transfer probably by next meeting, I suspect, in a couple weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, let me know if you need anything else.
I will, Mark.
Okay, thanks, Nick.
Thank you. Randy back there? If not, we'll get him in the other part, uh, annual report when he comes up this part. The order is annual report. And the traveler's plan.
No, I didn't have one.
This is one where while grabbing on each of you on a trail, the claim is suckling, train track, it's probably eight U. Correct?
That's the one we talked about previously.
Okay.
So, so reach.
Okay. Uh, while I show the core or commission reading reports. And we have a list of main street events, uh, requesting use of the courthouse. Uh, there's several, uh, events planned, and those are community art sale, um, Saturday, May first and Saturday, September fourth. Cruising and street dance, uh, June fifth. Rick Street Market, June twenty-sixth, these are all Saturdays. And then trick or treat on the square is Sunday, October thirty-first. And hometown holiday will be planned Saturday, December fourth. They're asking permission to place banners, advertise their activities, uh, much that we have done in the past. We'll clean up the lawn after each event and provide the county with proof of insurance. And as always, we will work with the customer and make sure we follow all the rules. One question I have, uh, because it has been, uh, an issue passed, nothing, not flexible, but how long, um, ahead of a event should banners be up? Have people that have banners on the, on the courthouse?
But before they've been used in the past, it's a...
It's varied, it's varied. Some have been up too long, some have been up pretty short, so. Anybody from Main Street here? And do you remember at all how long typically they have the banners up before the event?
Like a week before, a couple weeks before?
I still remember all summer, really get around it. And they won't play the flag jump, yeah. So should we? Kathy, anybody? Well, a couple weeks ahead of the event, is that enough time to advertise the thing for sure?
I would think that you're not, uh, it's events that they've, they've done pretty much every year.
Yeah, people pretty much do.
I'd say give them two weeks.
Okay. So in this, did you, did you, when you come, that means they're low, um, well. I guess we're given the permission to put banners in, but two weeks before the event?
And then what's the take down?
Take down immediately after that, you did that, yes.
And that's your motion also.
Okay. All right. And then, what is this application from Penn Township?
That's something I should have written today that I really didn't think, I think this...
It, it reads to be just a update as to what the requirements are, and a notice to be read, basically, as to the requirements to receive assistance through the township office.
So this informing us as to what they're doing when people...
That's how I read it.
Okay, it's nothing we have to do on...
Right, they've passed a, uh, passed something approving that through their board. Uh, so I don't know if that's a, a different procedure than they normally used to do or not, but that's what it appears to be.
There's nothing that will concern us, right, there's township difference?
They didn't ask us to approve anything, so I would assume that's just informational. My assumption is informational, but...
The highlight part here says, favor to comply with any requirements set forth on these guidelines will make you ineligible for township assistance. Local giving of false information will also be a basis for denial for township assistance. Maybe that's what the change is.
I would say that's...
That's the part we got, the page we have, and that's the highlight part on us.
On the board relief, and yes.
Okay. All right, because, and I guess they're letting us go because they, if they want to file a, an appeal to a township decision, it does kind of...
I would say you probably have issues.
We had one in my tenure here, one here. Okay. Uh, okay, we're going to, uh, did we talk about the change in the truck routes last meeting?
Yes.
We did. I, I don't have that to be signed, but...
I thought you were working on that, yeah, because from one hundred...
Four seventy-five, yeah.
Um, not time handled, you're already working on that?
That's what's in front of you.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, for review.
For review.
The other question I have is, there was an served express meeting about attendance, uh, of some board meetings, particularly the health board meeting. Someone from the health board apparently had reached out that they have board members who want to hear them. And, uh, I, I shared that information with the council at the council meeting. To me, that's the president of the board's responsibility to report to us that we have appointees not showing up for meetings. And once they make that report, then we can verify that it's accurate, that I think you thought, and I'm not sure if three meetings in a row that they're eligible, that's cost, or due place.
That's my recollection that, that states that, but I can brush up on that, but I think I already did research that at one point.
Need to lose anybody willing to serve. The tough part about getting volunteers is they got to serve. You got to be there. That's why you got on board, so you got to be there.
It just puts everybody else in a tough spot as far as getting a quorum to be able to make official decisions.
Because it requires that everybody else be there every time.
Yep.
Makes it really tough. And, uh, that's all the other stuff I've got. And then we just have a letter here from Sharon Oliver. I've got an email from her as well. But really, her issues are all with state, uh, state highway things, uh, nothing really to do with us, uh, just informing us of why she's concerned about the issues around the, during State Park on forty-seven.
Mainly speed limit invoked, and that's a state highway, so we can't do anything about that.
Route six, rack and...
Right.
Route six.
Yeah.
It's not something you guys can do much about.
No. And, um, hoping that the, um... David gets some buggy lanes, you mentioned, I know I just went up to, uh, to Pika, Indiana, it's all on shut there, and they have those supposed lanes, but that's just cost. And so far, Indiana's not willing to do that down here yet, so we'll see that, that goes. I don't think I have any role in this, Danny, any help? Then, Julie is not here, but Julie submitted a report. I'll just share that with you. Hundred and twenty-six responses in February, under nineteen patient transports, run volumes are average for this time of year. Twenty twenty-one total collections, a hundred and four thousand, eight hundred. Twenty, twenty total collections, eighty-six, ninety-seventy, so we are, um, well ahead of twenty twenty's total collections, so already, and it's already, uh, February now, so. Um, so we're seventeen, almost eighteen thousand ahead of that. Um, two hundred and sixty-six outstanding accounts right now, amounting to a hundred and forty-two thousand. Twenty-four, nine to sixty-plus days over, we just will begin to get that, who've dealt with the litigation. Vaccine clinic is moving to the old Ivy Tech building, so newspaper, if you want to take note of this, although I'm not sure they're going to notify you as well. Uh, due to conflicts at the fairgrounds, the vaccine clinics are going to go to the Learning Center building, um, across from Casey's there. And that's going to be March nineteenth, twentieth, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and April second and third. So those three weekends in the road beginning March nineteenth, they're going to be moved to that location instead of the fairgrounds. Our whole goal with fairgrounds is not to impact the, the fair board anymore than we possibly had to. Um, they're not scheduling anything new, but they are, we wanted them to, uh, well, go along with the things that, to honor the commitments they'd already made. Some of those were sales, they've been advertising sales for a month. You can't all of a sudden say, no, you can't have it, or you got to find a new location, so. That we're working around. It's a seven-hour tear-down and rebuild for the vaccine change. So to ask these folks to change locations to work around that is pretty remarkable, but so far, they have done it, done it, done it willingly, well. I've heard nothing, and we've had our two, two rounds lost, my wife and I, and, uh, it just goes amazingly smoothly, and I think they're doing a great job. Uh, they do, sped late, and the age requirement was around the forty-five this week and potentially forty by next week, so we're getting there, so people are beginning to get this done. And we encourage everyone to have their vaccine, of course. I've, uh, unfortunately been on the news lately, but it's good stuff, about, about the Cover Bridge Festival, that we have full intent of being as it always, always has been. That this last year was beyond anyone's control. And, uh, CBC, the Audrey Office, the Southern TMLs, uh, the health department is working along those lines. Everything is going as normal. We fully expect to have a Cover Bridge Festival as we have since nineteen fifty-seven, so life will move on. The other part of Julie's report here is, she has requested, do you remember she had a two hundred thousand dollar grant for education grant?
Yep.
A part of those money she would like to use for a copy machine in the classroom area, because they'll have to make copies from time to time as they have classes going on. Um, so she has the funds from that grant that she can use. And the machine will be paid for with the training program grant that they receive. The contract is for a black and white copier and the same maintenance agreement that we utilize for the county. The price includes the full contract paid upfront, as that's what the grant requires. I am requesting permission to sign the contract agreement. So if we agree to enter in that contract, let by it, then we also have to make, uh, give her permission to sign it, because they put her name on the sheet, and on the sheet, so. I would make the motion that we, uh, accept the offer from Tashiva Business Solutions to provide a copier to the, uh, learning, uh, facility at the admin service. And also authorize the director, Amy's director, to sign the contract.
And I'll second that.
Oh, you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Do you want these, not exactly, but she has to sign them, I guess.
Yeah, to get them signed, yeah, to get them signed, right.
Okay.
We do have a black and white copier just sitting in the office. That's nothing huge.
Really?
It came from here.
This is a grant from the state, though, right, so it's not cost to state.
Yeah, it's from the state, it's in the end somewhere else.
There's any other department somewhere that's going to need one here.
Yeah, well, okay, I'll get that for her. And, Chris O'Brien, is he back there?
Yep.
Yep. Hey, Justin Cole?
Nope.
Randy, you're just been time. Come on out now, this don't even set up.
My planet, that way.
Yeah.
We all doing this evening?
We're doing good. We get nervous when I started that, seeing everything?
Yeah, it was. Well, did you have any questions or anything on the annual report?
Nope, I didn't have any. It was two weeks ago.
You have the motion approved then?
I don't know.
Or signed?
Okay, I guess we will then. I think we will.
Approve the highway enforcement, uh, to...
I'll see you around once you're more, I can come on hard time. I'll make, I'll say that, all papers out. Bruce is not hearing. He didn't have to sign. He wanted to keep it for him, he just wanted back.
I think, uh, I think two of us are on it.
I forget, well, we're trying to test it. And this is the agreement between us and Walbach Valley to do our contract paving.
Yes.
It's an agreement just like we had last year. We just pulled it up, changed dates and stuff.
I've seen a lot of Walbach Valley's agreements.
Okay, that is pretty much, that's the only bit we got.
Yeah.
We approved it last.
Yeah, they're pretty much the only game in town anymore, so.
All right.
They're actually going to be at my next meeting.
Really?
Thank you.
We'll be excited to get those done, and it's funny on the next.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Mark had mentioned, uh, sharing engineering plans or ideas on the Northern Bridge during Rosedale with the trails going through. So you guys will be getting together on that and talk about how, how that works? You know what we're talking about?
Oh, that, right there at the shop line?
Yes, yeah. So you guys figured out how to work that out, how it works, how best?
I talked to someone about that a year or two ago, I think.
Okay, good.
I don't know the name.
Okay. As other things come up, we'll get with you two about right away and how we're going to work those places where we have to work around. But we'll, we'll stay well ahead of that, so there's no, no surprise, no pressure, or it has to be this way now, we'll go. We'll work together, make sure we stay well ahead of what's going on, if I got a chance to be concerned about it or not be concerned about it, make sure we get it.
Okay.
Peacefully, yeah.
We're in the process of riprapping, riprapping, uh, nine bridges for scour. We have to have that done by, I think, sixteenth vehicle or something like that.
Right.
Before they come inspect again. Before they come inspect again. So, we're in that process now.
How far along are you?
I think we got three done.
Okay.
Then we've been grading and hauling material to grab our ropes, everything we can.
So, you're really going north, a lot of trucks going north with your firm the other day, so isn't where you were, that's really hard.
Thursday and Friday, we called 53s to up there to Harold Newton.
Oh, okay.
He paid for, from his driveway or his road out to the blacktop or 53s.
Okay.
We got them all hauled. And we've been doing a lot of culling.
Good. This week range shouldn't be a problem for it or anything, that shouldn't be, do you think so?
No, we're stockpiling it.
I should, you know, it's a real good shape.
They work.
I'm going to, we're not, this is, it's firm enough, good.
The way you drive it last week, we were going to sneak by without having a mess, but this is going to be ugly again.
See, there, or Henley Road has busted up quite a bit, I've seen it today.
I noticed Walbeish Road is getting some, it's, hadn't come out yet, but it's just cracked.
Cracked up.
Broken pieces.
That's why it's Henley.
Pretty good potholes on it, on Walbeish.
Well, the guy who drives Amish a lot mentioned that, and his river burn, maybe mission maybe wasn't enough or something, but he had missed that, I agree, through from the blacktop to the part of the street, streets are, so you might look at that if you have a chance.
Yeah, the grader hasn't been up that area yet, over east now, we're working that way.
Did you get a chance to get on Mill Road?
Not yet.
Okay. You're just asking this one?
Yeah, he's in the northeast part of his area too, so he gets that done and he comes through the Admiral's Bottoms and he'll be working, down toward that way.
And he.
Just trying to get them all as we go instead of skipping around here, there, and down there.
Sure. Anything you need from us?
I don't know, I don't know what.
Budgets held up okay? You were treated pretty well. How many, how many times you driven, in one or two?
No, I don't remember now.
More than two?
Yeah.
Good, remember?
Yeah, we've sent like four or five times.
Okay.
Make a little more than that. We got still a little money left in that.
Good.
I got enough to start for the next year.
Okay. Any progress on the, moving over to crane site with the?
No, I haven't worked on that at all, I don't have an operator now for that, but he's in the grader, so.
Sure. How many sites?
I talked to the Heritage Petroleum Oil guy that was in town or whatever, they're going to send us a new agreement, taking out that language as to the tank.
Okay.
So, he's supposed to be sending us something on that.
Okay.
But he stopped in my office and we talked.
I didn't think we had any problem this year, I mean, ours were delivering a few, we had to call them a couple of times, but they came right out and filled it up.
Yeah, it was just that contract had the hold harmless language in it, and they're going to remove that, and so we should be fine with the contract once they do that.
To me, that was even beyond hold harmless, it's your fault, whatever it is, you pay for it.
Installation, maintenance, and he didn't fight me at all on that though, he immediately said, we'll take that out, so.
Okay, good.
Well, that's what it was supposed to be anyhow, putting it in for their benefit and ours.
Staff wise, how are you?
Well, still short.
How much?
I think altogether about five.
All the truck drivers?
Truck drivers and one operator.
Are you getting any application from truck drivers as well?
Nope.
Is that all the money?
Yeah, I think we did too much, we're only sitting home.
Oh, okay.
We don't get no applications. So, I don't know. But I moved a distributor driver, well, operator, to the grader, so that's a position open now. By the time he may have come back to that, that's not going to be someone hard, you know, back and forth.
Right, and that's a shame you can't hold it going the whole time.
Yeah, well, the distributor, that's kind of seasonal, but we need it, made, made for the dust control, then we'll need it for the paving seasonal projects.
All right.
All right.
Keep at it, thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a good weekend. Hi, how are you?
Good. Um, so, you got something?
Just can give you just a few quick updates on the COVID impact grants that I've been working on. So, the first one we did was the business recovery, which was loans to business entities that we did for 15 local businesses. So, we've actually just received information for annual reporting that we need to do on that grant, we'll be getting back with the businesses and ensuring that they've retained the jobs as promised on their application, so that's going to be hitting probably next The connecting people with disabilities, of course, that's been awarded, they did ask for a tweak in the subrecipient agreement, just because it expanded outside of Park County in the language, so Jill is going to be updating, tell that story from Carr, she'll update that portion of their description of the project. And I know the auditorium's office has been on copy of that subrecipient, so when there talks, has the language about how the financial part will work with that particular grant.
Right.
And then the third one was the Food Alliance, so I submitted the application last Thursday, will know April 15th that that will be awarded to the county.
Okay.
So, just wanted to recap those. And the demolition started on the town home project here in Rockville with the 40 town homes, that started last Wednesday.
Great.
So, you'll see a lot of busted concrete down there right now.
It's nice to see things going along.
It definitely looks different if you go down Michigan, because all the storage units are gone, it just.
Been a long time coming.
Yeah.
How many times have they applied for?
Four.
Four times?
Four years.